Thank you all for your patience. Looks like we have a forum here and we have, you can go ahead and get started. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is the Borough of Yate in Legislative Session, August 15, 2024. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'd like to proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor.
Esteemed Mayor Rowan Hopkins.
Present.
President Latoya Monroe.
Present.
Vice President Leana Roklau.
Present.
Councilor Nicole Beatty is absent today. Counselor Antoinette Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Michael Trent.
Present.
Counselor Jesse Peetz.
Present.
Counselor Loren Johnson. Bertul. Solicitor Kilkeny.
Here.
Finance Director Nichols.
Present.
Tax Collector Hughes. Don'tsir tonight. Panoni Engineering.
Present.
Thank you. Madam President, we have a call.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our Citizens Forum. We will start with Thorp?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't want to mess that up. Would you like to? And could you, just for our record, could you state your name, please? Except for the record, can you state your name, please? You can go to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Shalane Thorp.
Good evening. All right, and you have a concern that you want to bring to the council?
Yes, I've been living now on Orchard Avenue for about three years. For the last year and a half, it has become an expressway. It's very dangerous for the children to play on the street, as well as the seniors. And so I decided to come tonight to voice my opinion to the committee to find out what can we do? My concern was getting a speed hump, so that that can eliminate the traffic, the speed, and the children can play. That's my concern.
Thank you very much.
And so what happens now?
So there are several steps in getting a speed hump done. We have to do kind of traffic studies, our chief has to get involved with that. So someone will be in touch with you at the email address that you.
Yes.
Mr. Cave is our Borough Manager.
Okay.
So someone will be in touch with you about the concern.
You're looking at, what, 30, 60 days? What are we talking about?
I could call you to.
What are we doing?
I could call you tomorrow, ma'am.
Pardon?
I could, how you doing, ma'am? I could give you a call tomorrow.
Oh, I'd appreciate that, and you are?
I'm the Borough Manager.
Oh, okay, and I am Pastor Shalane Thorp.
Nice to meet you.
So if you call tomorrow, we'll have a conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we also have Pamela Thornton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pound K. Kevin. I got a call a couple of weeks ago saying that I couldn't park my truck in the parking lot anymore. I didn't know what to think about that. So I was asked to find somewhere else. So today, when I went out, I had an event. I had to get up at 5:00 in the morning in order to get to my event. Now, today is the last day for me to park in the parking lot. Now, if it takes me 5:00 to get up in the morning with the truck parked across the street from the shop, just imagine what time I have to get up in order to go get the truck, to load it up and get to the event. So the day at my event at the Wells Fargo, I'm thinking all day long, where am I going to park this truck? Because I was only given 45 days to find another parking lot or parking space. And for the life of me, I couldn't figure out where am I going to park this truck? I've been in business for 14 years in Yate, and I brought the truck two years after I opened. So I've been parking here all these years. Not for the life of me did I think I would have to find somewhere else to park, when I had my business on Church Lane in this public parking across the street. And I paid the fee for years to park there. And then I'm telling, I'm being told that a new ordinance has been passed that there's no commercial vehicles to be parked nowhere in Yate. I can't figure out what am I going to do at this point? And I was thinking also, I've been a citizen out here for over 30 years. I've been living here. A business for 14 years. Is that going to matter to the council? That I've been out here all these years and that my business is right down the street? I should have been even given more time to find ample parking than 45 days or how many ever days it was that I was given to find other parking. What am I supposed to do? And on top of it, I don't have a loading and unloading. I can't park in the back of the shop. And I can't park on the street. So what am I supposed to do, I would like to know, with this new ordinance? I load the truck to go to events from 712 Church Lane. What am I supposed to do at this point when I need to load to go to an event? Can somebody tell me? Because I don't know what to do.
So I do want to just let you know that there's no new ordinance.
That's what I was told.
I'm sorry that you were told that. But this ordinance has been in existence for well before 14 years even. So we, you know, we as a council and, you know, we have to take into consideration the parking for residents. And there has been some, like, we were looking for ways to alleviate some concerns that are over there and also ways to keep our borough safer. So there have been some activity on Church Lane and activity within that parking lot that we need to address to make sure that we are keeping the citizens of this community safe. When allowing non-permitted overnight parking and commercial vehicles to be there, you know, we wouldn't be allowing this just for Pound K. Kevin. If we continue to violate our own ordinance, we would have to do that for everyone. So I'm very sorry at that inconvenience. And I'm sorry that you were misinformed that this was a new ordinance, but this has been on the books well over 20 years.
So what's been going on that it hasn't been enforced for 12 years?
That's the question that we asked ourselves when residents approached us to revisit how the parking lot was being used. So we had to revise the ordinance to be able to even allow residents to park there. So that was the only revision, was permitting residents to park there. But the not.
What about the, I'm sorry?
The not parking of commercial vehicles, that has been on our books for a number of years.
And a business district is business, it's not a residential.
But our residential abuts the business district and that parking lot is still not for overnight parking of commercial vehicles. It never has been.
So any suggestions for what I'm supposed to do at this point? Since you haven't been reinforcing it and I'm under the impression that it's okay to park there? You charge me a parking fee every year to park there. So, I mean.
So we're not, we're no longer going to issue that type of permit for that parking lot? I don't have a suggestion for where you can park a commercial vehicle.
I would say, Chief, could you just privately see what ideas you could come up with to help?
He's already, I'm sorry, he's already suggested, you know, one place. But other than that, you know, there is no other place. And when I do find another place, what time in the morning am I supposed to get up to load this truck to go on an event? This is really inconsiderate and.
You have other businesses in that block that delivers also. What did they do? Could you ask them? I know Coconut Breeze has a lot of catering and take-in, take-out deliveries. What did they do?
They may deliver. And I do event affairs where I have, like, I could have a thousand pieces of cake that I got to load in the truck. I have tables, chairs. I mean, there's equipment that I need loaded in the truck. And what happens when I do find another place? Where am I supposed to load it?
Madam President.
Those are some things that, yes.
May I suggest that we try to set up a separate meeting that, to meet with the business owner and perhaps with Chief and Code Department to see what else we could figure out? Because if it's affecting her business, then what's happening with the other businesses as well along the business district?
I mean, I'm open to that, but also how much do we want to involve government and private businesses? So we want to make sure that we're careful about governing private entities.
I'm a community-based business, not just private business. You know, I service the community as well as private customers.
All right, so, I mean, we can brainstorm with you, but we do have to make sure that, you know, we, all of us have taken an oath to uphold the laws and ordinances of this borough. And I don't think that we should violate that for any one business or individual. So we can definitely have a conversation of maybe how we can operate within the law to do that. But for the time being, we do have to make sure that we are enforcing the laws and ordinances of the borough.
So until this meeting takes place, what kind of leniency can you give me for the truck?
So the.
Because I still haven't found anywhere.
So that, you were good, there was notice given and we have to abide by that notice?
A couple of weeks? That's so inconsiderate. So again, I ask what kind of leniency can I have for the truck until I find something?
There, I can't offer you any leniency. What I can say is that we have to uphold the laws and ordinances of the boroughs. So whatever the notice was given, that's what we have to abide by. I have Candy. Good evening, can you state your name for the record, please?
Say what?
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Candy, that's it. Jackson, there you go.
Jackson, okay, thank you.
All I wanted is some grass cut in the neighbor's yard. Been asking for almost 25 years. So you think somebody can do it? When I call up here, they say the borough don't do it before they even think about what I need. Can't get the mayor because his number is nowhere to be found. So can someone cut the grass next? I don't know what's over there. Trees, you name it, it's in the yard. All I want somebody to cut.
Is the property that you're speaking of?
Nobody lives there.
So the property is unoccupied?
Unoccupied, yes.
Okay. And have you, could you give me the address of the property?
It's 537.
537. Orchard?
Yeah.
Okay. If the property is unoccupied and is being properly cited, then we can evade it and charge it back to the community.
You can cut the grass, the trees or whatever it is?
Yes, we can, as long as it is unoccupied and.
Yeah, nobody lives there. Now, somebody owns it, I guess, but nobody lives there. But this has been going on for years. People lived there and they didn't have to cut their grass. But you come to my house, somebody put a sign on mine to cut grass. They don't put it there no more because Yate and Borough does not like Ms. Jackson at all. Put it on mine for a couple of years.
Well, I like you, Ms. Jackson.
No, no. I'm so honored to be here, to live inside that.
I just got here, this is my first time meeting you.
I don't know any of you.
How you doing, Ms. Jackson? I'm Latoya Monroe.
I just want the grass cut, you know.
Right.
You take care of it.
Thank you. All right, so there ends our Citizens Forum. Next, we will move to the meeting minutes. Is there consideration to, for the July 18, 2024 Legislative Meeting Minutes?
Madam President.
Vice President Roklau.
I would like to make a motion to approve the July 18, 2024 Legislative Meeting Minutes.
Seconded.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question.
Can I have a question? In the manager's report, there's a small edit for those minutes. Can we do that now and just?
Yeah, so why don't you suggest the edit and then see the person who made the motion and second it and accept the amendment?
Okay. The suggestion is to correct Action Item B under the manager's report from the July 2024 Meeting Minutes. I just transpose numbers. It should be amending 285-51, and I had 251-51 in the agenda.
Okay.
I don't think you need to amend the minutes for that because that's what actually happened. Because these minutes will reflect the change.
Okay.
Well, I'm not the solicitor, I'm the assistant.
Since this was suggested, why don't we just clean it up and make it consistent?
So with the amendment, with that correction of transposing the numbers of the ordinance, with that correction being made, can we take a roll call vote?
Do we have to vote too?
All right, so the person that made the motion, was that okay?
Yes. All right. So can we take a roll call?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Roklau.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes.
Counselor Be, I'm sorry, Counselor Trent. Counselor Peetz.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous and the motion carries with the minutes passing with the corrected ordinance number. Next, we'll move on to our mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I have, my report stands as written. I have a couple of just notations. Next, Mayor's Forum will be Thursday, September 5, right here at Borough Hall on the second floor. Have reported that two full-time officers left the force last month. We're currently two full-time officers down. Three are expected to also retire in January, at which time will be five officers down. We have notified the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Trent, who said that he will take care of that, right? All right, and the Curfield, there's been some hiccups off and on. It was due to a budget impasse, unable to fund the guard. It was closed again, but now it is reopened as of July 22. So we're back in business there and hopefully that will continue unimpeded. National Night Out was, on Tuesday, August 7, was a great event. We collaborated with East Lansdowne and actually was hosted by Lansdowne Police Department, Fire Department. And I understand it was a really great success. We want to thank Madam President and Madam Vice President for showing up and showing your presence. Appreciate that, we're going to look. And also, this is a national program that happens nationally. How we do it is up to the different municipalities. We've had different things. We've had giveaways in the, speaking of that parking lot, East of East Citizens Bank Parking Lot. We've done different outreaches in the community. And this seems like it's worked well. We are a community-based police department in that we do, not just a but, but we do answer calls. And we, for each neighborhood municipality, East Lansdowne, Lansdowne, Alden, and the like. And this is, I think, a good idea to, for outreach and community policing because they are also our neighbors. So we'll continue to do that. Worked pretty good, right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you so much. It was a grand old time. A Public Works Director that I know was in the dunk tank. I don't have that footage, I'm still looking for it. But, yes, and then if I could just make one clarification, Mayor, for you. How Mr. Trent will take care of it for the Civil Service Commission. Just a point of clarification that when we're down police officers, the Civil Service Commission opens up a test. From that test, we have a pool of applicants and from there, we're able to select police officers. So that's how we take care of it.
Thanks, right, he's not taking care of it as a counselor, as a counselor, but as the Chair of the Civil Service Commission.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
With respect to the National Night Out, more importantly than our presence, there was a large presence of Yate residents. And I would like to just put on the record, I appreciate the residents coming out and showing support for their police department that evening, so thank you.
And thank you, Lansdowne, for hosting.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
So when are we hosting?
Hopefully, Community Park next year.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to our manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a very interesting six weeks. I've learned a lot, made a few mistakes, but it's all out of effort. My tight goal for myself is, over the next, over these first couple of weeks, is to learn a lot, to observe and to listen. I've conducted a lot of self-guided trainings, discussed staffing, projects, processes, and systems. Over the next couple of weeks, you'll see a lot of my recommendations towards all of those. One common item that a lot of folks are really interested in discussing, and rightfully so, is the development project at 1100 Chester Avenue. I've visited the site eight times between my onboarding and yesterday. Met with a few residents, noted resident concerns regarding parking, restrooms, site plans, and communication with the public. On August 8, I met with the developer, with our solicitor and engineer. We discussed those resident concerns, violation history, and our future expectations, not only that we have from council, but what the residents expect out of that development and the communication going forward. And our next step for that site is resolving some violation history. So I will, we will have updates on that very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And under your motion, there's a consideration that we already took care of during the minutes. So thank you for that. Next, we will move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just a brief report this evening. As I know this is an issue of great importance to council, we are moving forward on the smoke shop ordinance. I know Ms. Bryan has talked to Mr. Womack and will be presenting that, going through the MPC or Miss Talley's Planning Code process, where it's reviewed by the county, our planning department submitting that. As Mr. Cave talked about, 1100 to 1108 Chester Avenue, we did have a good meeting last week. We have deliverables from them. So what we decided to do is, although council authorized it, to hold out the complaint and equity right now to hopefully resolve this rather than spending additional money and going to court. If we don't get something to council satisfaction, we, of course, will go to court on that issue. But hopefully, we can resolve a lot of this internally first. And I know the first deliverable we're really working on is, he was under the impression that, you know, with our previous code officials, that many of these citations were already paid. And wanted to present some evidence of that fact. So what Mr. Cave's going to do is look at that, look at what he has and see if it matches up. And know if there is to be some relief granted, obviously bring that to council. But it was a very constructive conversation where I think there was a lot of communication back and forth with staff. So the other matters that our office is working on, 1219 South Longacre and 725 Fern. We're still waiting for the county to act on those things. I see Ms. Todaro there. We had a staff meeting with her, we went over that and the application process. It's nothing that we have not done at the county level. Also, too, had an email exchange with Chief on, he was talking about testing on future police officers. One of the things we want to do is make sure our Civil Service Commission rules are up to date. They were a little rusty, so to speak. So he is going to be working with the Civil Service Commission and Special Counsel, Mr. Greg Colliniak, to update those. They will make those updates and then vote and then present them to council. And then hopefully, that's in place before the testing process begins because you want the current rules in place before you start hiring people. The other issue I know of great concern to council, we filed the default judgment in the Frankie Francis matter. They have filed an answer saying that they're requesting that the default judgment not be granted following petition. In the meantime, interestingly enough, they have finally answered or accepted service on many of the criminal complaints in this matter. So we will be working with Mr. Cave and your staff on being ultra-prepared for that hearing and we'll keep council up to date.
All right. What is the timeline for the 1100 Chester Avenue? I don't, we don't have a very good record of being as tough as we need to be and as holding people as accountable as we need to in our code department. So I don't want this to just be kick the can down the road.
So, Mr. Cave, I know we followed up and we internally talked on the legal update meeting that we had. And you were going to follow up with deadlines for the applicant. Maybe you can illuminate?
Yeah, so even today, we exchanged some numbers back and forth. One of the other deliverables was a little bit of extra transparency that the public can have at view as far as the updated site plans and updated timelines and updated deadlines. So that's one of the deliverables that we have another call scheduled for next Wednesday to see where we are with all of those. So I'll have more and I'm happy to report back then.
So thank you for that, but I'm looking for a report now. How much time are we giving them before we sue them? That's my direct question. How much time are we giving? Because this has been years, and I know it's just been seven weeks for you. But this has been years. So I'd like to hear, how much time are we going to give? And, you know, I don't understand and I wasn't aware, can only go but so far.
Sure.
So in the interest of our community and what's happening there, because, you know, it's hard to explain to our residents when they see activity on that site, even if it's just a minimal activity, that, like, what we are doing. So here and now, I'm going to ask for one week before we file. And if they can't get us the information that they need to get us to show that everything that they have is paid, then we can just talk it over with the judge in court. It's been long enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That ends your report?
Yes.
All right. We have our tax collectors' report.
Madam President, council, the tax collector report reads, discount period is over collecting penalty amount of taxes until 12/31/24. October 12, 2024, hosting a tax and tea workshop for residents. Checks should be in dark blue or black ink.
White.
Discount period for collecting taxes is over and penalty amount of taxes are being collected until 12/31/2024. October 12, 2024, hosting tax and tea workshop for residents. Checks should be in blue, dark blue or black ink. And the amounts collected for the month of July for real estate taxes, $20,900. And the amounts collected for the month of July for real estate taxes, $20,966.18 are refuged or trashed, $5,775 for soar, $6,908.69 for a total collection of $33,649.87. That ends the Tax Collector's Report.
Thank you very much. Now we can move on to our Engineers' Report.
Good evening. I have two updates and then one motion. The first one is news about a new grant award for Green Light Go program for intersection improvements for Church and Bailey. This will supplement the award that you already got and hopefully take away the match that you promised as part of that. So now, the entire project will be borough funded as part of that. So I wanted to announce that.
I'm sorry, you said the entire project will be?
Fully funded.
Fully funded. Oh, I thought you said borough funded.
No.
I'm like, no, thank you.
Fully funded for the borough.
Okay, thank you.
Did I say borough?
Is it borough funded? No, we did not agree with that.
Don't take me word for word on that. Plenty of funding.
Okay.
The next update is regarding the CDBG project award. This was tentatively approved a month ago, however, it has to go through a 30-day review process. At this point, the borough was awarded $177,995 from the Delaware County CDBG program. And at the time of the application, we put in for a sanitary sewer replacement on Myra Avenue. So myself and the manager attended a pre-award meeting with the county yesterday. During that meeting and in previous conversation with Public Works, it was asked that while Myra is, what was, we put the scope for? We have since learned that there's a location on Parmley that is in worst condition that we feel the money could be more of a priority for. And with your approval, we would like to request to the county that we reallocate those funds towards Parmley. And if you're okay with that, we can move forward with those documentations.
So how are we judging? Because I do believe that we kind of have been talking about Myra Avenue for a while and preparing the residents for that. So, yeah.
Dad, I'm going to look at you. I hate to put you on the spot, but this was...
The Parmley Avenue issue stemmed from a sewer backup on Pleasant Road, which backed up to do two homes, which caused litigation and some serious issues. This problem have rise after the Myra Avenue issue. Myra Avenue is flowing, Myra Avenue is in pretty decent shape. Parmley Avenue, which is adjacent to the Pleasant Road, is in very bad condition. And if it's not replaced sooner than later, we could have a catastrophe. So it just, it's deemed more important than the Myra Avenue at this time.
Okay. But how efficiently is Myra Avenue flowing?
Very efficiently. There's some separation.
Did you give us like percentages before?
I don't believe I did, but percentages, I'll say it's 80%.
Okay. So why do we want to fix it if it was a B?
Preventative.
Preventative, absolutely preventative.
So Myra was preventative, okay.
Parmley is more of a public hazard.
Yes.
Situation.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yes, it needs to be done immediately, if not sooner.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item on here is for the 1219 Longacre Boulevard demolition. So last week, the county did award that project. When we were at the county yesterday, it is the same division that covers both CDBG and demolition. So we discussed that yesterday. They awarded Longacre and they sent the agreement over yesterday and that will be expedited. So with that signed, we will start working on specs and plans to get that out to bid. Did you want to add something? Okay. So I'm asking for approval to proceed with preparing specs and contracts and going out to bid.
Okay. So previously, we discussed that bundling the multiple ones was the better way to go, but this is, they only approve 1219?
Yes. So we had a lengthy conversation yesterday and I explained our justification. At the end of the day, they feel that they cannot award Fern until we show progress with Longacre. And I said to them, we will get better pricing if we do both of them together, but if it goes over, we can always go back to them and request more and they understand that. But they need the borough to show progress and that is what, in their justification and just to explain, all the funds from the demolition come from housing sales. And obviously with those slowing down, there's a lot less funds than there used to be available. So the program is a lot more competitive than it used to be. And now they are making you provide a lot more documentation and a lot more justification. And in discussions with the county yesterday, this was awarded, we can show this, move this forward. And when that is successfully, I do feel like awarded and started construction, we can talk about Fern again.
Have, we had those conversations with the contractors or will we?
It has to go out to public bid. So it will be, once it is up on public bid, I will make sure that everyone is aware.
I mean, even in the bid packet, can we, are we able to mention that there may be an additional one, that like not, like mention the process so that they can consider having, you know, giving us that better pricing?
I can, maybe. I, I can't think of one off the top of my head like that, but we can certainly make them aware that there's another project coming in the area. As far as the pricing goes, they're going to bid what they think it costs. However, we do always have the option to go back, if it comes in over budget, we always have the option to go back to the county with justification on why it was higher and have them pay that.
All right. Sounds good.
Madam Chair. Thanks, President Rooclaude.
Thank you. So my question is, did anyone take into consideration which one of those properties were more, were deemed more severe than the other? Public safety?
We had that conversation yesterday and unfortunately, that decision was taken out of my hands. When we submitted both of them together, I provided justification for both properties. They chose to move forward with the Longacre application in front of county council. I'm going to be honest, I do believe because it was the cheaper option, which should not be under consideration. And I did provide that as justification yesterday in the meeting that they're shoring up on the sidewalk and that it is very unsafe, which is why, but even in that conversation, it was not willing to move forward. So I feel our best course of action is to bid this project and, I don't want to say get it done, that sounds really bad, but show the completion of this project and then show progress, have them award Fern.
But it sounds like that we have it documented that Fern is the more dangerous project. So if anything comes of that, we've done all that we can do.
We have shown numerous times. Now, I will say, if they were to be bid, because Longacre is a single-family house, it can come down a lot quicker than Fern can. Because of the connection, it, the structural engineering behind that just takes longer. So it can move much quicker than Fern can, if that doesn't help, but it...
I just, I mean, you know, it is what it is at this point. You know, Fern Street is attached to another property. And if something, in a meeting before it's demolished, if it falls before then, it could potentially pull the adjacent property down as well. So, I mean, you know.
I feel like, and maybe we'll have that discussion with our solicitor to see, to make sure we've had the right documentation to show that the borough has done, protected themselves. I don't know if there's anything else.
And advocated for our residents that are attached. So we, it sounds like we've done as much as we could do and the choice was the county's. So, okay, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion? Sorry. Do you have any more questions for me?
I don't believe I do. I was going to make a motion for, okay. We have consideration for the approval to proceed with preparing contract specs and advertisement for the demolition project at 1219 Longacre with the award of county demolition funds.
Madam Chair.
Vice President Rooclaude.
I would like to make a motion for the approval to proceed with preparing contract specs and advertisement for the demolition project at 1219 Longacre Boulevard with the award of county demolition funds.
Segue it.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none. One more.
One more question. What is the estimated time approximately from when all the specs and everything is prepared?
I'm hoping to have a contract on the street within the next month.
Okay.
I don't think I'll be able to bring you a recommendation for next meeting, but October meeting is when I'm hoping for an award, recommendation.
Okay.
All right. Can we proceed with the roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Rooclaude.
Yes.
Councillor Trueheart.
Yes.
Councillor Trent.
Yes.
Councillor Pete.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right.
Is there anybody that oversees what's going on with Yaden Avenue with all that construction and everything? Seems like they, in their work, they kind of like upset some of the sidewalks, or at least one. And I don't know if they're planning on fixing that soon or...
That's Amy's report.
It's in your report.
It's not me.
I have one question, Madam President.
Get back up there, Rick.
One question.
Yes, thank you.
And this should be quick. Any update on Church and McDade?
So Church and McDade, they had the pole spot meeting with PennDOT where they stood at the corner, made sure that all the foundations could go and not be in line with pedestrians. And the poles have been ordered at this point. We have executed contracts, we are moving ahead. I know the ramp design is underway and being submitted shortly, so we're moving. It's, it's under design, the poles, unfortunately, the signal poles because of, they take months. So, we're getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our Finance Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm asking for consideration for the approval of an AP list for the month of August.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, may I have a consideration on the floor for consideration of the accounts payable list for August 2004, no, 2024, sorry.
Segue it. Having been moved and seconded on the question? Hearing none. We'll proceed with our roll call vote.
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Rooclaude.
Yes.
Councillor Trueheart.
Yes.
Councillor Trent.
Yes.
Councillor Pete.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Consideration for our June cash balance report?
Madam Chair.
Vice President Rooclaude.
I make a motion to approve the June cash balance report.
Segue it.
All right, having been moved and seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Rooclaude.
Yes.
Councillor Trueheart.
Yes.
Councillor Trent.
Yes.
Councillor Pete.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next, we have consideration for the approval to ratify ordinance number 2024-6, amending the Police Pension Fund, Chapter 284, to revise the service increment for officers.
Madam Chair.
Councillor.
I make a motion for the consideration for the approval to ratify ordinance number 2024-06, amending the Police Pension Fund, Chapter 284, to revise the service increment for officers.
Segue it.
Having been moved and seconded on the question? Is there, we've already discussed this. This is...
Any other suggestion?
Okay, thank you. So this is an ordinance just that already existed and we, well, and we've been following, but we needed to follow up with a formal ordinance. Can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Rooclaude.
Yes.
Councillor Trueheart.
Yes.
Councillor Trent.
Yes.
Councillor Pete.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. Next, item D is consideration for approval to accept Eastern Salt Company LLC as the salt contractor. Already? For the 2024-25 winter season, the amount of $69.75 per ton.
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice President.
I make a motion for the approval to accept Eastern Salt Company LLC as the salt contractor for the 2024-25 winter season in the amount of $69.75 per ton.
Segue it.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question? Hearing none, can we proceed with our roll call vote?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Rooclaude.
Yes.
Councillor Trueheart.
Yes.
Councillor Trent.
Yes.
Councillor Pete.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
That vote is unanimous, the motion carries. And item E is presentation of the 2025 municipal, minimum municipal obligation.
Madam President.
Good.
Is this, this is an emotion?
It's not a motion.
Oh, it looked like a motion to me too. I was confused.
On an annual basis, every municipality by September 30th is to report out publicly the financial requirements for its minimum municipal obligation for its pension fund for all employees. So I just have to read the numbers publicly again before September 30th in order for the borough to be compliant and also to receive state aid from the state of Pennsylvania to assist the borough with the obligation. The 2025 minimum municipal obligation for our municipal police department will be $824,959. The financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the 2025 budget period for Yaden Borough's Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Fund will be $94,000, I'm sorry, yeah, $94,848. And lastly, the financial requirement for the minimum municipal obligation for our Non-Uniform Union Defined Contribution Fund will be $44,262. That ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to ordinances zoning.
Good evening, residents.
Good evening.
All right, so I am going to start my report. During the month of July, our department had an uptick in vehicle violations and cars towed. We had about 37 more vehicle violations and 12 more vehicles towed in the month of July than we had in the month of June. That was due to a natural progression in abandoned cars and coupled with a few complaints from residents. And to speak further to that, the goal for next month is not necessarily to have more violations in this region, the goal is to reach long-term compliance and to minimize repeat violators in that report. So hopefully, you know, next month, there isn't as, you know, many car violations, but if there is, we will know that we have trends in certain areas of the borough and we will have, you know, long-term plans to address that. And next, just to kind of also discuss something, 1100 Chester, I was able to have my first site visit at that location a couple of days ago with the commercial BCL. And he stated that the actual contractors so far have been doing a great job. I was able to shadow him on a wall inspection and he approved the inspection and they moved forward with laying concrete for that location, which they did do today. And we also had an issue at 1301 Angora for a tree that fell over the weekend. That tree had, or that address has now been abated. And, you know, part of the tree that was blocking the public roadways and sidewalks had been cleared up, you know, by our Public Works Department. Today is my 14th day at deposition. My goals are contribution or, sorry, collaboration with residents and council and my officers for long-term compliance and for the beautification of the borough. My initial goals coming in was to listen more than I spoke and to get a better understanding of ordinances and to understand everything from the ground level with the officers, to the residents, to the council. And moving forward, I hope... the council. And, uh, moving forward, I hope to show our plans more through certain, you know, violations and through long-term compliance. Open the floor to questions.
Madam President, Mayor. Mr. Mike, how are you? Um, can, can you speak on, um, further results with, uh, meeting with the commercial BCO? Did, did, was there an agreement for continued oversight going forward?
Yes. So the commercial BCO will continue to come out for multiple inspections as they pro- uh, progress with the construction side of that project. Um, and I do plan to accompany him on those inspections, uh, in a shadowing state, but he did state that he would be out there, um, a few more times. I do not have the exact members. I apologize about that, but that wall inspection was, uh, the first of many continued inspections for that project.
Thank you.
Madam. Vice President Roeklout.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report. Uh, with respect to, um, after listening to, uh, Ms. Jackson speak about, um, certain violations not being enforced, um, it just led me to, to, to this thought. What are we? Oh, sorry. So what are we doing to ensure that the residents know about, um, some of the low-hanging codes and ordinances that they need to uphold with respect to their property maintenance? So how do you plan on getting that information out to them? Um, right now I'm seeing a lot of, um, defective sidewalks, curbs, um, foliage growing in the sidewalks, the cracks of the sidewalks along the, uh, retaining walls of lawns, so forth and so on, and it's unsightly. Uh, so what are we doing to get that information out to the residents so they are educated on what they need to maintain pursuant to our codes and ordinances? Because I know there, those ordinances are not being enforced and they need to be enforced if we're going to have a decent quality of life. So I know you're going to get a lot of pushback, but those codes and ordinances have been in existence for years. And now it's time for us to be held accountable to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and doing our job to enforce these things.
Um, currently my plan is to have the violations serve as, uh, uh, for educational purposes, along with quicker follow-up on those violations that will naturally lead to more citations. And I think, you know, once when someone has a citation, that's when the, you know, the antlers go up a bit and they'll be more pressed to call in and issue that grievance with me. Um, I've let the officers know that we're going to have to have an uptick, um, in those, uh, certain, you know, violations that the actual ordinance slips online at the time, so I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I'm brainstorming, uh, quality of borough sections where we point out certain ordinances that may seem smaller to certain people and specifically the curbside, uh, grass, because that's something that I have noticed as well within my first fourteen days. Um, and a lot of people just simply do not, either they, they say that they don't understand that that's also their property. Um, but currently to directly answer your question, that would be just an uptick in follow-ups on violations and quicker follow-ups when we understand that these places are repeat offenders and also, um, quicker follow-ups in the state of, depending on the state of the grass, depending on how far the grass is out and honestly moving quicker. I would use the thirteen oh one Angora as an example of that. Um, that was a situation that we were made aware of on Monday. Um, today is a Thursday and that is a situation that we will continue to follow up on within the codes, because at this point that situation is now, you know, on, you know, that person's actual property, so it's not, uh, it's not necessarily blocking, you know, public roadway and walkway. Um, but for me, the simple answer is being very quicker on the follow-up process. And then I actually look forward to people coming in and complaining and being angry, uh, because then that leads to conversation. And over that time I will develop a long-term compliance plan, which I will, you know, present at future meetings.
Sounds good.
So it sounds like, uh, Counselor Roeklout brought up just, um, two main points and one of them being, um, resident education. Um, I might suggest that you take advantage of our newsletter that goes to every household and highlight the, um, the ordinances that are for that upcoming season. So our newsletter is quarterly, right? So like we just had our summer newsletter, so probably in the spring newsletter, we want to plan to, you know, have all of those grass ordinances. And then coming up for this fall newsletter, we probably want to have the ordinances surrounding property maintenance for, um, for, for leaves and things like that and so forth for the, for the winter, um, the winter edition as well. Um, the one thing that I've noticed, um, is that, uh, with our departments, that, um, Public Works is, is there to, to assist code. So don't be afraid to make that call and clean it up. And, you know, we have a solicitor who's willing to, to back us if we need to abate properties and recoup our funds for that. So don't think that you're just adding a loan. So, you know, it's okay to enforce and it's okay to educate, but welcome again and thank you.
I just want to add, Mike has been great in reminding you that he's here.
That guy. And, and two more things.
Yes.
I can, um, shade tree. Um, I, I, I believe we need to revisit that conversation.
Yes.
Because this is a tree-lined community and we need to revisit that. Um, and the last thing is, wait a minute, I almost forgot. I think it was the shade tree. Common driveways. You have that in your report as well? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, that involves code as well. Yeah. Okay. All right. Yeah, I believe that's it. That's it. All right.
Counselor Trueheart?
Madam Chair and, and Mr. Mayor, just a suggestion to go along with the education pieces, maybe that's also something that could be included in your mayor's for, to have a brief moment to, that educates on those types of things.
Now, look, you got the mayor willing to share the spotlight with you.
It's because he's more handsome than mine.
Thank you very much. All right. Does that end your report?
Yes.
All right. Next we will move on to Public Works.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Trent, I'm going to address your issues and everyone's issues with the Aqua Project on Yaden Avenue. We are moving forward. They're at the end of Allen Drive with the road restoration. They're now working their way from Allen Drive to Bailey Road with the sidewalk and curb restoration. So they're working their way backwards now. They're up and down the street. The notifications have been, uh, a little sporadic. I own the company constantly and I'll take full blame for any miscommunication. It's, they're a little rough to deal with. They're, they're contractors. But we're getting it done and we're moving off of the eleven and the ten hundred block by probably tomorrow and working our way down nine, eight, seven, and six. So we're doing well on that. And next we have Aqua is moving into town again. They're moving over to Alfred Avenue, Chester, to Patricia. They're going to Allen Drive between Duncan and Church, and they're doing church thing between Allen and Chester and again, Hereford Place. So they're staying in town for another six or seven months. It's okay. We're, we're, we're improving our infrastructure. It is a little bit of an inconvenience. There's a lot of, um, it's a lot of inconvenience for everybody, but we're doing the best we can. So, and then once this is all completed, our road program is actually going to pave Yaden Avenue from Redwood to McDate. We'll have a nice, clean, straight streets where we can all drive safely. We're doing our best. A couple announcements on trash. We have Labor Day. No trash. Uh, but we know recycling that week. Uh, trash for Monday will be Tuesday. Trash for Tuesday will be Wednesday. E-waste will be the thirtieth of this month, August, between eight and two-thirty at the Public Works Garage. Any other questions?
Twice a week ends the end of August.
Twice a week ends the last day of August, August thirtieth. Yes, right before the holiday. Correct.
I just want to ensure that when the contractors, Aqua, uh, is in town, that we make sure, um, everything is on our website.
It's already on our website.
It's already on.
Yes, I have, I actually have a letter from them here.
Okay.
That was given to Crystal. It's on the website. We placed it on next door. They will be notifying resi- residents, um, weekly, um, for, oh, let me see what they have. It's all here. I'll actually, um, have this scanned in and sent to all council members. I just received this this week. But they'll be doing their work between seven-thirty and three. They'll have a twenty-four hour, um, notification of any scheduled interruption of water and then they'll be re, um, it will only be a thirty-minute, um, interruption of no water per household, but it's going to be a, a long process, a few months.
And how will they be notifying?
They'll be notified by, um, actually flyers in their mailboxes.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours prior to a, uh, well, prior to a shut-off of water in their home. But the rest of the construction will be signs on each street and each block within at least twenty-four to forty-eight hours before.
Okay. And that involves where to park, where you can park and all of that.
Exactly, exactly. And, and when the cars are there and people don't move their cars, we're not telling them. We're making it valent after, to have cars moved and be diligent to our, our residents, not to inconvenience them as much as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I know with the cars, there can be a situation, especially in some areas like on a Thursday, when you can't park on one side and, and there's no parking basically on the other side. So that does cause a problem as far as where people have to park their cars. I know.
I agree.
Different streets, different.
Yes, every street's going to be different. Every situation's going to be different. And while, like I say, we're, uh, with the chief, if, I've notified him, if we're moving cars around and people cannot park on a certain block and they're jamming up another block, we cannot ticket people over there. It's just, it's, inconveniences are tough and we're trying to be nice to our, our residents and keep things moving.
Is something the police can forgive? Parking wise?
We're working on it, Mr. Trent.
All right, we're working on it.
We, we don't forgive.
We just.
We make it right. Apparate within the law, sir. All right.
Thank you.
That ends your report?
That's, that's our recording.
Thank you very much. Next up we have public safety.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
For the month of July, the Yaden Police Department responded to one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. We had seven criminal arrests in the month of July, five non-traffic citations, four for disorderly conduct, one for harassment. We had a hundred and fifty-three vehicle stops, um, where we encountered individuals, but, uh, fifty-five tickets were issued out of those stops. One thousand two hundred and twenty-three parking tickets were issued. As, uh, Madam President and Madam Vice President were there, thank you for National Night Out coming. Uh, Lansdowne was a great host. East Lansdowne helped out and it really showed the collaboration of us all working together. I also this weekend had the privilege of going to Delaware County Health Department and the Back to School event. It was great. And I actually was, uh, very honored to speak at the Librarian Mandingo Conference. It was held in West Philadelphia, but there were so many Yaden residents. It was actually, we had a symposium on gun violence and it was great to connect to the community and made a lot of, uh, contacts, talking to them about coming in and helping us out with the language barriers we have with a lot of the community and kind of working together. It was really good. And just mark on your calendar, I know we're only, uh, still in August, but October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, the second annual trunk-or-treat event. Uh, the school district, after, uh, having a back-and-forth, is going to let us use Curfield for it. So we're hoping to have at least fifty-five people, cars there for the kids, so. Any questions?
I just have one question. Um, uh, gun locks.
We have them downstairs and they're free. And especially would just happen in Darby. It'd be great.
Right, that's what I'm.
Yeah, we have them and you can come to the window and get them.
Okay. Thank you, Ramon. You should put that in the newsletter.
And there'll be a trunk-or-treat too. We're going to have it at our table. We'll make sure they're a trunk-or-treat. In any event we're at, we'll have them. And they're in the police cars too. So if you see a car rolling by, just, you know, you need a gun lock.
Okay.
Or just go to the library and take them off. They use them as bike locks, but we're not going to say anything.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh, that ends your report?
Yes, well, um, you're.
I guess.
Fi- fi- when I was saying fire de- um.
I'm sorry?
You're going to say fire department. Do you want me to sell for emergency management?
That's what I was going to say. Is there, is there anyone from fire department or emergency management? All right. Emergency management, we need to use the order.
I'll stop right there. Um, uh, obviously it was just, uh, took over the position last month. I already had a meeting with our team. Uh, we have two individuals still on the team. We're trying to build it up. We're going to hopefully in a newsletter put something out. And I went to training and I'm actually going through a lot of training now, a lot of online classes for it. And that's my emergency management report.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have recreation. Mr. Hunter.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, he's going to tell you to use the mic for the Zoom.
Use the mic. Oh, hear me? Oh, okay, good. Uh, veggies, veggies, veggies. Uh, we're in our, about a third of the way through our vegetable program. And we have seventy-four residents signed up. It's becoming a two-day event now. Uh, we do some deliveries of, uh, vegetables to shed-ins. Uh, so that's kind of taking us over into Thursday, but, um, it's a fantastic program. We've had a lot of people. They're hanging around and talking to each other, um, talking about recipes. Uh, before you leave tonight, we have some corn in the kitchen. Saying we have some bags, so before you leave, grab a couple of years of corn. Um, mark your calendar for Saturday, November the ninth. Uh, that will be our Veterans Day brunch at, uh, Yaden Borough Hall. And there'll be more, uh, details to follow. Uh, Y E A A finished its fifth season in basketball and my numbers are a little off. They had three hundred and eighty-four kids involved in the program with thirty-two teams, uh, the largest they've ever had. Um, so, uh, community park is being used, uh, to the hilt. Uh, the next recreation committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September the third at six-thirty, uh, via Zoom, and we'll get the coordinates to people. And lastly, um, there's going to be a tree, uh, it's almost like a tree tenders program, but it's called Trees, the People's Champion, uh, in Collingdale on the twenty-fourth of, uh, the month at, uh, ten o'clock to twelve o'clock. There's also something on Friday, but we're suggesting that people go on Saturday. We had a pretty large contingent from Yaden, uh, last year. So with our ongoing battle against trees, uh, good trees, bad trees, cutting trees down, replanning, uh, please try to come to that. Uh, Bill Leiter is very, very good. He's a certified tree, excuse me, expert. Uh, I don't know, Chief, did you talk about football?
No.
Oh, maybe I shouldn't talk about it. Uh, just to let the residents know, on this Saturday, there's a scrimmage at Curfield, uh, with football team, uh, with three teams coming in. I think it's George Washington and Potts Grove, if I'm not mistaken, for this week. And then on the twenty-third, the season starts. So on August twenty-third, there'll be a game against Norris Town, just to let the residents know, seven o'clock. Uh, and then on the thirtieth, there's a game against Avengrove, home game, seven o'clock, uh, at Curfield. So there'll be two football games before school starts. So there'll be two football games before school starts. So just to let the residents know, and I guess we'll have to post that somewhere so the residents know that there's going to be football. That's my report.
All right, thank you very much. Our solicitor has...
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to announce Councilman at 6:45 this evening, an executive session to discuss litigation and personnel matters. Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, can we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Segue it.
Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.